Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to the City of Lowell zoning ordinance appeals, August 13, 2022, public hearing. This meeting is in person with the option to join remotely. You can join remotely either through a computer, tablet, or smartphone device, or you can phone in as well. I just want to do a quick roll call for the members. If people are here, can we just say aye, please? Mark Brier.
Present.
George Prokop.
Present.
Sean Callahan.
Present.
Dennis McCarthy.
Present.
All right, thank you, everyone's here and accounted for. Just a reminder to the folks, if you have a phone or device, if you can turn it off or put it on vibrate so it doesn't disrupt the meeting. We'll move on to continued business. ZBA-2022-43, a petition is a special permit in variance. The applicant is 89 Fifth Ave LLC, property located at 114 to 122 Merrimack Street. 89 Fifth Ave LLC has applied to the Lowell zoning ordinance, seeking special permit and variance approval to convert the second floor commercial space at 114 to 122 Merrimack Street into two residential units. The property is located in the downtown mixed-use DMU zoning district and requires a special permit pursuant to Section 12.1D for the use, variance approval pursuant to Section 6.1 for parking, and for any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, councilor.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Geary of the Law Offices of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing 89 Fifth Avenue LLC. With us tonight are Hector Rodriguez and Malagros Hernandez, the principals of 89 Fifth Avenue LLC. As the chairman mentioned, we're here tonight requesting a special permit pursuant to 12.1.1D of the City of Lowell zoning ordinance in order to convert vacant commercial space on the second floor of this building into two residential units. We're also seeking relief from 6.1 of the bylaws for lack of off-street parking. The property is located at 114 to 122 Merrimack Street in the downtown mixed-use zoning district. Property consists of approximately 3,430 square feet of land and about 13,000 square feet of gross area in the building. The building occupies the entire site, the entire lot. In addition to the application and the narrative that I've provided with the board, we've also provided both existing and proposed floor plans that should be in your possession. The existing layout of the property consists of three floors. The first floor has three retail units on street level. All three of those units are rented. One is occupied. The other two units are in the process of the fit-out and expect to be occupied fairly soon. The existing commercial space on the second floor is vacant and has been vacant for a while, and the third floor has two residential units which are occupied by tenants. As I mentioned, the proposed conversion of the second-floor units will replace the empty office space on that floor. The rear unit will consist of two bedrooms, one bath, with approximately 1,350 square feet of living space. The front unit, the unit along Merrimack Street, will consist of three bedrooms, one full bath, and approximately 1,692 square feet of living space. Once the second-floor renovations are completed, the applicant expects to be able to place tenants in those units fairly quickly, which will result in this building being fully occupied shortly after the renovations are completed. Having a fully occupied building along this corridor of Merrimack Street is important to this downtown neighborhood. In addition, the fully occupied building will maximize the real estate tax revenues for the city and will provide much-needed housing in the city. I'd also like to point out the applicant's business model for their rental business, which is focused solely in the City of Lowell, is somewhat unique. Their goal is to attract long-term tenants by providing safe, clean, and affordable units. And what I mean by affordable units is they are below market rate. The tenants, this model has proven very successful for them. The tenants seem to appreciate them as landlords and tend to stay as long-term tenants, which ultimately results in a very stable property. We expect that that will be the case with this property. The DPD staff comments are very favorable to the proposal. The comments note that the floor plans include bike racks in the lower level, so that will benefit any tenants that wish to use a bike as an alternative mode of transportation. Comments also go on to note that the DPD doesn't have any concerns about the lack of parking since there's several municipal garages in the downtown with plenty of capacity. Finally, the staff notes that it supports the proposal considering that the conversion of the second-floor commercial units will result in an underutilized building being fully occupied and stabilized. The economic, the Director of Economic Development also weighed in on this and notes that the city is encouraging conversion of upper-story commercial space into residential units per the 2021 Rapid Recovery Plan for the downtown area. This makes perfect sense and seems to be the trend in what we're seeing downtown in Lowell. Ultimately, I believe the application meets the criteria for issuance of a special permit and granting of the variance. The redevelopment of the property meets the city's master goals of the master plan. It meets the goal of converting the upper-story buildings in the downtown into residential units and stabilizes this building on a very important corridor in the downtown. In addition, relief can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of the zoning district in the downtown. So ultimately, we believe we meet the criteria for issuance of the special permit and the variance, but we're happy to answer any questions of the board or address any concerns that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Now we'll open up the hearing to members of the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? In favor, seeing none of that portion of public hearings close? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none of that portion of public hearings close? We'll open up questions or comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that this makes a lot of sense where the building is underutilized right now and the third floor is already used as residential. I was a little confused by the floor plan, but I know that this approval for the site, for the special permit and the zoning variance doesn't hinge on my opinion regarding the building floor plan layout, but how does egress get met, if I can just ask, from the second and third-floor units with just the one stair indicated on the plan?
The applicant actually has an architect doing the code review on that right now, and the indication is that the one point of egress is sufficient for the code.
And is it a sprinklered building? Is there a sprinkler system in the building?
No, there is not.
Huh. Well, I'm sure that our inspectional services department will weigh in on that and figure out where things should lie. It's not something that I need to participate in, but it was just a curiosity, that's all.
Yeah, we certainly comply with any of the requirements of the building commissioner.
Sure, I understand. I think there's plenty of parking. I agree with John Street and Marcus Street close by that are both underutilized. So, and I think that the special permit for residential on the second floor is something that I can absolutely support, so both for the variance for parking and the special permit for use, I'm in favor of. So I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree entirely with our dedicated staff who has lent its full support to this petition. It redeveloped an underutilized commercial space, and as Attorney Gary said, fully occupied buildings in the downtown area are absolutely vital to the continued economic development of the area. This petition absolutely achieves that. I'm in full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo the points of my fellow board members and from the DPD staff. I think I would like to say that I applaud the applicants for their business model simply because they're thinking long-term. From what Mr. Gary mentioned, the fact that they're going to keep it cost-affordable, sorry, affordable, it's imperative because when you have a rotating type of residence, I mean, it doesn't do any good for the city. So I think if you're thinking long-term, just the business model in itself, I think it's commendable. And again, the way the setup is, it's a nice area, and I think it does meet all the criteria. Anyone that rents that space would be in a good area to live. So I would be in support of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I, yeah, I don't see, this seems to make sense, especially with the revitalization of the second floor on the underutilized building. To Mr. McCarthy's point, I mean, a second egress would be beneficial, but I do see at least some of the new updated plans that he provided. There is a little space on the second floor, right around with the HVAC room, where you got a little hallway access there. I was going to ask you about that, but it kind of makes sense. I mean, and again, this is not something we really need to, we should be concerned about, but I think there's more for the building, probably for the building department. If there's a possibility, and I don't know where it leads down to, I know there's a, I believe there's an alleyway back there, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, there is, right.
It's a, so, but again, I don't know if that's a full alleyway that will lead anybody out, but a second set of egress, if, at least you got the possibility of, if that's a, to put a fire escape in there or something to kind of get a second set of egress out there, if that's.
Yeah, then there is a fire escape there.
There is? Oh, okay. All right, so, all right.
So we'll certainly, you know, work with the building commissioner's office.
Yeah, so, but, yeah, that's, again, I think it's a good revitalization of the project and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Councillor, you know, I agree with my colleagues. I think this is a great kind of reuse or repurpose, this conversion of the commercial space into residential. You know, it's just, when there's open space and, you know, the retail market's not there, you have to pivot, so that's totally understandable. To the point everyone here, it's, you know, it's, if the downtown, the buildings and the business did not fall, we have to, we have to utilize it another way. So this is a very, I think, creative way to kind of reuse commercial space. And to everyone's point, you know, housing is such a big need, especially low and affordable housing, like you said, it's a big need in an urban city like Lowell. You know, I really don't see any issues with this. You know, and I wanted to thank you and your client. We saw the signs, so thank you. Everything's posted. You know, I know there's a little bit of a, kind of a holdup because of the public notice of the postings, but.
It happens.
Yeah, so, so thank you for that. Hopefully it didn't push things back too much. We appreciate everyone's cooperation on this. So, again, I think this is a great repurpose and the conversion makes sense to me. So, if we have no other comments, for my colleagues here, we'll move to a motion, to a vote, two separate votes, one on the special permit, one on the variance.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a special permit for ZBA-2022-43, a special permit for use on the second floor for residential.
Second.
A motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Brier. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Vice Chairman Callahan.
Approve.
Clerk McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve.
All right, councillor, your first petition has been approved, special permit. Can we have a roll call on the variance, please? A motion, excuse me, a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA-2022-43 for 114 to 122 Merrimack Street for variance, for reduction in parking.
A motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Prokop. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Vice Chairman Callahan.
Approve.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve.
All right, councillor, you've been approved. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you, thank you all coming this evening. Appreciate it. Moving on under continued business, we have ZBA-2022-46, a variance. The applicant is House of Hope Incorporated, property located at 35 Varnum Ave. House of Hope has applied to the Lowell zoning ordinance, seeking a variance approval to construct an eight-unit apartment building at 35 Varnum Ave. The property is located in the traditional neighborhood, single-family zoning district. The project requires zoning board approval, a variance for minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum open space per dwelling unit, maximum stories, maximum height requirement, and maximum front yard setback under Section 5.1. Minimum off-street parking space, spaces under Section 6.1. The construction of more than one primary residential dwelling structure on a lot under Section 5.2.2. Relief from the landscape open space requirement under Section 5.3.1, and any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. I believe we have the petition on Zoom this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chair, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Joe Messina. I'm actually representing House of Hope tonight. Deb Chassey, the executive director, I believe, has sent a letter to the zoning board that I would like to read tonight, if you would like.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Deb writes, "At our last meeting on September 26th, I agreed to a continuance until the next scheduled meeting, which is tonight, October 13th. In my haste to be heard, I did not consider that due to the Monday holiday, the meeting tonight would be moved to a Thursday evening. Unfortunately, House of Hope is having their only annual fundraiser, The Harvest of Hope, tonight. She realized the error immediately after the meeting and informed the neighbors and the planning department staff that House of Hope would not, would be seeking a continuance tonight until the next scheduled meeting, Monday, October 24th. Deb and her staff also met with the neighbors this past Tuesday evening and informed them that they would be seeking a continuance on the matter." And she would like to thank the board for your understanding in this.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for that, sir. If there's no other comments from you, we'll move to a motion for a continuance.
Do you want to check the schedule for Fran? Do you want to, what's, how's the schedule for 10/24? Just want to make sure we're not overbooked.
Right.
No? All right. I wouldn't have any problems putting it up for 10/24. I just wanted to double-check. I know we, we're trying to keep tight to the schedule.
Yeah, I agree, agreed. Any other members?
I can pull it up. We'll just take a moment.
Okay.
Yeah, we can have a little bit of discussion. If Monday, October 24th works for everyone on the board for this matter to be continued, but if not, we can, we can look to see, if we're full on the 24th, then we can move it to the following one, but what's, we'll look to see what's on the agenda for 24th and whatever the wish of the board is, we can do.
Okay, so the 24th has five items on the agenda, so it's up to the board. We have 459 Broadway Street, 545 Broadway Street. Both are other, under other business. One is a minor modification, one's an extension, and then three public hearings.
Okay. I think that that should be good for us for the 24th. If none of my colleagues have any comments or anything, we'll have a motion to continue this matter before it's to October 24th.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA-2022-46, a variance is for House of Hope at 35 Varnum Ave to be continued to October 24th, 2022.
Second.
A motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Prokop. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve continuance to October 24th.
Vice Chairman Callahan.
Approve continuance to October 24th, 2022.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to October 24th, 2022.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve continuance, October 24th, 2022.
All right, sir, your item has been continued to 24th. Wish you the best of luck, and we'll see you October 24th.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your evening, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Moving on under continued business, we have ZBA-2022-41. The petition is a special permit. The applicant is 168 Seafood Market, located at 119 Chancery Street. 168 Seafood Market has applied to the Lowell zoning ordinance, seeking special permit approval to erect and internally illuminate a sign at 119 Chancery Street. The property is located in the neighborhood business NB zoning district. The proposal requires special permit approval pursuant to Section 6.3 of the Lowell zoning ordinance and any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Carlos. I'm representing the 168 Seafood Market. We was moved to this meeting, it was on the September 12 meeting. Unfortunately, we missed a step, but after that meeting, we just hang the sign so that people can see our project, who's going through.
Sir, are you, are you still on Zoom? Sir, if you're hearing us, if you can unmute or.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now, yeah? Is there anything else you wanted to share with us on your, on your petition, sir?
Nothing for the moment, thanks.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir. We'll probably have some questions, so you want to just hang on and we'll open up the hearing to the public, so just hang on one, one second online, and I think some people might have some questions or comments. All right. So we'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none of that portion of public hearings close? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, seeing none of that portion of public hearings close? We're going to open up questions, comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is pretty straightforward, and I really have no questions. The only thing that I'll review with the, with the petitioner is the comments from DPD. I'm referring to number six, where they may need city council approval if there's an overhang of the sign. Question to the petitioner, are you aware of that?
Um, yes.
Is it your intention to, to hang a sign that, that encroaches upon the public row, or are you going to put it flat against the building?
It's a flat against the building. The, the only thing is have, you had to have foot outside because it has LED internal illuminated, so for the, for the lights to be, to work properly against the sign, it has to be at least 0.5 feet.
Okay, thank you for that answer. I support your petition.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also support this petition. I wasn't sure, it didn't say that this would be illuminated, right? So I don't know if it falls under the guidelines of the timing of the lighting and if it, if it impacts any of the other businesses or neighborhoods, but again, I think this is a straightforward item, so I would be approving it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I do say it's, we're looking for illuminated, illuminated signage, and we're only dealing with the one sign that's exhibit one, I guess they call, is one that doesn't wrap around. So as far as illumination is concerned, sir, what's, well, let's start with the, what are the hours of the, of the business? I think he muted, sir. Our friend, I don't know.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yep, I can hear you now, yep.
What was the question, sorry?
What are the hours, what are the hours of operation for the business?
I'm not, I don't have clear the hours of operation of the business, but I think is they don't pass like 8, maybe 7, 8 PM.
Okay. I would just suggest the standard illumination hours that we usually condition things on, which would be, illumination hours will only be one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset or close of business, whichever comes first. So if you're in agreement with that, I think, otherwise, I mean, I think this works fine, but we, we do probably have to keep the hours of operate, hours of illumination in check like we normally do, so, so if you're in agreement with that condition, I mean, I would be approving, an approval of this, so.
Sure, sure. Yeah, sure. We actually put a light interactive so they can turn it on and turn it off.
Okay, great, sounds good. All right, that's all I have, though. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wish you the best of luck, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for Francesca, if you could. The six-inch overhang into the right-of-way, I know that building, building elements can overhang the right-of-way by six inches. This sign isn't seen as one of those architectural elements? Is that why we're looking for special approval from the city council?
I wasn't aware that it was only six inches. This is something that we can look into and maybe including something like, DPD staff will review to determine whether it's necessary to seek city council approval, and if that is the case, the applicant will obtain necessary approval, something like that would cover you.
I think the applicant stated that it was six inches, .5 feet.
I'm just saying I would need to verify the rule, the, what you're telling me now. I would just need to double-check. I, not that I don't believe you, but I would just.
This came up on another project, I think it was over on Lakeview Ave, maybe a year ago, that the applicant was looking to overhang the right-of-way by a roof edge. So I recall that from that project, but you're right, it might be, might be inaccurate memory on my part, but, okay. So I think you probably have the two conditions then, as I see it, that I'd like to see is the one for hours of illumination, two be no more than one hour before sunrise, two no more than one hour after sunset or close of business, whichever comes sooner, and then that the applicant, that the DPD review the application to determine whether or not the applicant requires to go before the city council for the overhang into the public right-of-way. But I can, I can absolutely support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Sir, you heard the comments of the board. I'm in agreeance, it's, to me, it's pretty straightforward with those two. With those two conditions that we talked about, the hours of illumination and, um, um, the other condition of the, uh, overlay of the hanging over the public way. So if you're in, if, if you're in favor of those, petition will move forward with a vote. Are you okay with that, sir?
Sure.
Okay, perfect. Um, if we have no other comments from my colleagues, uh, we could have a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the, uh, the ZBA twenty-twenty-two dash forty-one for the applicant at one sixty-eight seafood, uh, at, at one nineteen Chancery Street for one sixty-eight seafood market, uh, for a special permit for illuminated signage with the, uh, uh, two conditions, that the hours of illumination, um, be no more than one hour before sunrise and to no, uh, uh, to no, to no less than one hour before sunrise, no more than one hour after sunset or close of business, whichever comes sooner. Second condition being that the, um, if it's determined by the DPD that the, uh, application requires, uh, approval from the city council for overhang in the right-of-way, that the applicant will seek that.
So just to clarify that condition, it should be one hour after sunset or close of business, whichever comes later. I think you said sooner, Dennis.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay.
You got that right, friend. Okay, just wanted to double-check and make sure.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. All right, so that was a motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Proko. Um, camera roll call, please.
Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve the conditions.
Vice Chairman Callahan.
Approve a condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve a conditions.
Member Bier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve it conditions.
All right, sir, you've been approved. Um, we wish you the best of luck on your project. Uh, thank you for coming out this evening and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, sir.
Thank, thank you. All right, moving on to the next item on our agenda. Under new business, uh, we have ZBA dash twenty-twenty-two dash forty-four. The petition is a variance. The applicant is, um, I apologize, I will not say this correctly. Um, Agrija Assembly, Deus Vida Incorporated, property located at twenty, two fifty-one Mount Vernon Street. Um, the applicant has applied to the zoning board appeals to, to use the existing building at two fifty-one Mount Vernon Street as a church. The subject property is located in the urban mixed-use UMU zoning district. The proposed, proposal requires variance approval pursuant to section six point one for relief under the minimum off-street parking requirements, relief from minimum parking setback requirements, and for any other relief required in the Low Zoning Ordinance. Good, good evening, councilor.
Chairman Peck, members of the board, good evening. Uh, for the record, my name is Attorney John Cox, three seventy-five Gorham Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I represent, um, Geraldo, Geraldo Silver, who's here this evening. He's the pastor of the, you gotta bear with me on this one. Agraria Assemblia de Deus Vida Inc., which is a church currently located on, uh, Central Street in Lowell, uh, five forty-seven Central Street. Uh, they have a congregation of about two hundred people. Some of them are here this evening. Um, and, uh, are very excited to, uh, hopefully move to Mount Vernon Street, to that beautiful historic underutilized building on, on, um, two, uh, two fifty-one Mount Vernon Street. Uh,
Thank you.
We've been working with, uh, with the city, with, uh, Francesca and, and her people, uh, and, um, we looked at the comments from various, the, the city departments. It seems like the biggest issue or the biggest question mark is what, how will the parking work out? Uh, currently, there are twenty-two parking spaces that, uh, the, the church leases from Mr., I don't know where Sal is, but the, the owner is, is in the hallway as well. Uh, and they lease from him. Uh, we've, we've, I think supplied the, the lease and, um, the biggest, uh, the biggest thing we'd be looking for, as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, a couple of variances pertaining to parking. Uh, because it's an eight, eight thousand square foot building, we would need, uh, eighty parking spaces on site. We do not have that. We have, um, twenty-two from the easement from the city. Uh, we are proposing an additional nine spaces, uh, on the plan before you that, that Dave, um, uh, will be able to explain. Dave Philson from Landplex is here with us, uh, which would give us thirty-one. Uh, we would obviously need, uh, relief of, for the thirty-one to the eighty. We've done a study of the, of the neighborhood and we're all familiar with that neighborhood. There are some two hundred and twenty-five on-street parking spaces in that neighborhood. Clear, you know, clearly adjacent to this building, uh, which we think would definitely be utilized. The church has about two hundred parishion, parishioners, and, uh, some of them live in the neighborhood. Uh, the pastor thinks that, uh, uh, a, a good number of the parishions would be able to, to walk to the services. So the, 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 the one variance is, would be for not enough parking spaces. The other one would be the, the nine that we are proposing, this, this gentleman's the owner right here. Um, the other nine would be, um, we're proposing that, uh, need, need the minimum, uh, does not meet, meet the minimum setback for parking spaces from lot lines. So, pretty straightforward as far as the variances go. Um, the questions from the, the city department, uh, mostly, I believe, the, oh, the DPD as well as the engineering department, was, um, how, how's this gonna work out as far as when is the church gonna be busy, when is it not going to be busy, that type of thing. Uh, and, uh, the other question was, of the twenty-two spaces in the easement from the city, uh, how are they regulated? Uh, the easement, I think we, we provided, I think, I think you may have a copy in your packet. Uh, the easement calls for, this goes back to twenty-two thousand and fourteen, calls for, uh, twelve of those spaces to be no limit and any time at all for the, uh, the owner or his or her, less he, and, uh, ten spaces in, uh, off-hours from school hours, weekends and when school is not in session, which works out very, very well for, for the schedule of this church. And I can give you a, a kind of a breakdown. Uh, for instance, on Monday, the church, I mean, there may be people there during the day doing church business and that type of thing, but, excuse me, nothing, nothing major, you know? Um, but like Monday night at seven-thirty, there's a pray, it's a prayer night. About twenty-five parishions would normally show up. Tuesday night, seven-thirty PM, a women's group. About fifty people would show up. On Wednesday evening at seven-thirty, there's a choir rehearsal. Fifteen to twenty people normally would, would be there. Uh, Thursday at seven-thirty, there's a service. There might be about a hundred people there on a Thursday night for that service. Uh, Friday night at seven-thirty PM, an adolescent group, maybe twenty-five or thirty people. So you can see during the week, it's very, very not utilized at all and always at night and not really, not, not that, that heavily. Uh, on Saturday at seven PM, there's a youth group. Approximately fifty people show up for that on average. And on Sunday, which is the busiest day, most, most churches, uh, nine-thirty AM, there's a Bible school. Approximately a hundred people would, would normally go to, to that. And then it's, uh, yeah, excuse me, again, at seven PM, there'd be a Su, the Sunday service and it'd be, you know, it's open to all the persons. Maybe, there may be two hundred people there on a Sunday night. Uh, clearly, the Lowell master plan, uh, calls for, uh, services to be provided to people, religious and otherwise, to try to keep people in the city. Uh, clearly, these variances would keep this church in the city. It would go to a underutilized and, uh, un, underused building that we all know, that's a beautiful building, um, historic and, 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 uh, and site. Uh, and, um, it just wouldn't, it seems to make a lot of sense for that neighborhood. I could totally not, I could not agree more with the memorandum from, from, uh, DPD dated October the sixth on, uh, comments number nine. The existing building has fallen into disrepair. The proposed use to utilize this building would be a significant improvement to a historic Lowell building and improvement for the neighborhood. We wholeheartedly, uh, agree with that. Uh, we, uh, we stand, um, willing to answer, of course, any questions or what have you, but they're, they're very excited to be in Lowell as the church and they're very excited to hopefully be moving to a new location. So, uh, thank you for your, for your, for your interest.
And thank you, Attorney Cox. Thank, thank you for that summary. Um, now we'll just open up the hearing to the public. Um, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor. Um, seeing on that portion of public hearings close. Um, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition. I'm seeing on that portion of public hearings close. Um, we're gonna open up questions, comments to the board now. Um, the chair recognizes, uh, Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I agree with the, the planning department. I think it would be, uh, I think it would, it'd be a great addition to the city, um, especially, you know, you know, given the fact that that building has been in disrepair for quite a long time. I might, I drive by there all the time and I, you know, my, my daughter works at the school there, you know, for parks and recs, so I'm always dropping her off there. And I, I notice it's, everything around there is, is nice. The school, there's a, you know, the park, you know, they play basketball, football. So you have this building that needs work. So I, I think it would be a great addition. Um, I, I don't have an issue. I, I do wanna note that the asset manager made a comment, which I'd be curious about, um, that, um, that you should provide an executed recorded easement of the existing twenty-two parking spaces. According to the city records, it's only a draft agreement as opposed to an executed agreement. So has that been done?
Sure, uh, that, that, that comment had me scratching my head as well. We have, we have submitted a, uh, a, a recorded, uh, uh, copy of, of the, of the easement, uh, from two thousand and fourteen and, uh, I think Francesca would, I have them with me, but I'm, I thought it was, I know it's been provided to the city.
That's my understanding, is that there is a recorded executed. Um, there was some confusion about it. Do you have a co, I'm not sure that you have a copy. Okay. I don't know that this, I think the city didn't have a, a copy of the executed version, but the applicant provided it.
Okay, okay. Oh, that's good then.
Yep.
Yeah, so the fact that your operation is, is mostly off-hours, I don't think it will impact the school. Um, and, and at night, there is ample parking around the park, so, again, I, I think this would be a nice addition, you know, uh, and I'm looking forward to seeing it completed. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Proko. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I agree with, uh, my fellow board member, Mr. Proko, uh, that this would be a vast improvement to the city, uh, and to the, uh, to the building as well. I've scratched my head, too, about that whole thing, 'cause I'm looking at the easement thing. It's got the stamp on it that says it's recorded, so I don't know, I mean, you can even, I can pull it up on the ma, online in the master plan records right now and I'm sure it'll pop up there unless, uh, something's going on over at, uh, Middlesex Registry of Deeds, I would think, uh, everything in there is in order, so, um, but, um, I think, yeah, this, this will be great for the community as a whole. Uh, there's plenty of parking over there and it sounds like, you, thank you for providing the schedule as to how the activities go over the week and it seems to me, I don't think it'll have much of a major impact at all. Weekends mostly, probably, obviously because of services that go on, but, uh, during the course of the week, it sounds to me like it shouldn't have, it should have a de minimis effect, uh, as far as traffic and parking is concerned, so, um, I'm all for, I'm all in favor of this and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just wanna say, I was looking forward to this, uh, moment, speaking about this project, uh, for, for weeks now. When I first saw it, I was so excited to see this building being revitalized. Um, I, I've been, I've been looking at this building for so many years, wondering when, when it would happen because it's such a beautiful building and everything around there is fixed up, um, with the school and, and it just, uh, needs someone to love it. And this, this is exactly what's taking place here and I'm so glad to see it. Um, I think this church is gonna be a wonderful addition and, um, I think the parking makes total sense and to utilize what's there and what we have for street parking. I, I'm just so excited to see this happening. Um, and I look forward to, uh, speak, uh, voting favorably on this application. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Bier. Mr. Bier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, just a side note, when I reviewed the comments from DPD, I circled one comment and it happened to be number nine. The very comment that, um, Attorney Cox highlighted, that the existing building had fallen into disrepair and the proposed, uh, utilization of the building would be a significant improvement. You're darn right it would. I've always found this to be such a unique building, so unique, pastor, that I had a personal interest in it myself. So I'm, I'm a bit envious that you got it, but not so envious that I would vote against your good deeds. I wish you all the very best and it's great to see that building repurposed for just a wonderful purpose as you intend. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bier. Um, Mr. Cox, um, you know, you heard the comments of the board. Um, I, I echo the, the sentiments. Again, you know, I think this is a great reuse and repurpose of the, of the building. Um, that whole area, um, has been kind of uplifted. So once this building is inhabited, um, by the church, um, I think it'll just help lift that neighborhood and that, that community even more in terms of, uh, beautifying that, that area. Um, you know, and I, I, I support this. I, I don't have any concerns with parking. I think the use of the church is, is minimal impact in terms of, um, usage and, and parking and, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sure on its high-traffic days, um, or services, that there's gonna be, um, plenty of people driving, but, um, I think we'll see a good amount of people walking and even, um, carpooling and using some kind of transportation service. Um, so I, I have no concerns with parking. Um, I, I did wanted to ask, um, Pastor, if you could just come up to the, the podium and just, can you just say the name of, of the church or come, that, that'd be great. I just, I, I wanna be respectful. I know I butchered a couple times.
Limited, uh, abilities in English. But he speaks English way better than I speak Portuguese.
Good evening, sir. I, I just wanted to see how you'd say this, the, the, the name, that's...
My name?
Sure.
Oh, the church. Uh, Igrea Assemble de Deus Vida Inc.
Oh, that's amazing name, amazing. Just, I, I wanted to make sure people heard it, we know it, 'cause I, I butchered it a couple times, so I, I apologize. I, I apologize. I did. So, but, but thank you for coming out this evening, Pastor, and, and your congregation. We, we appreciate it and, you know, I, I, again, like my colleagues, I'll be voting in favor. If, if we have no other comments from my colleagues.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would just say that any project that gets Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Bier that excited has to be a good project.
I, I, I echo that. Thank, thank you, Mr. Proko. I agree. Um, if there's no further comments, um, we'll move to a motion.
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA twenty-twenty-two dash forty-four for variance for Agrija Assemblia de Deus Vida Inc. At two fifty-one Mount Vernon Street, um, for variance approval, um, for off-street parking and minimum parking setbacks.
I second.
Uh, motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Proko. Um, camera roll call, please.
Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve.
Vice Chairman Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Bier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve.
All right, council, you and your applicant approval. Wish you the best of luck. Thank, thank you so much.
Chairman, thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you. And I wanna thank Francesca and her office for all their help as, as always. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Cox. Thank, thank you, Mr. Cox. I agree. We agree. Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Moving on to our next scheduled item on the agenda under new business. Thank, thank you. Have a good night, sir. Thank you. Thank you, folks. Uh, moving on under new business, we have ZBA dash twenty-twenty-two dash forty-five. The petition is a variance. The property located at eighteen forty-seven Middlesex Street. Um, the Collegiate Charter School of Lowell has applied to the zoning board appeals for a sign to be located at eighteen forty-seven Middlesex Street. The property is located at the suburban multifamily zoning district and requires a variance under section six point three point four to install a sign in the zoning district and for any other relief required in the Low Zoning Ordinance. Um, good ea, good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Carl Neistrom. I am the business manager for the Collegiate Charter School of Lowell, which is located at eighteen fifty-seven Charter School of Lowell, which is located at 1857 Middlesex Street. And the reason for the variance is the Collegiate Charter School of Lowell is not visible from Middlesex Street. The entrance to the school has an easement next to, is part of 1847 Middlesex Street. The collegiate sign is to assist parents, students, and others from finding the entrance to the school. In addition, the Collegiate Charter School at 1857 Middlesex Street serves the city of Lowell as a polling location. And we feel that this sign would also assist the public with locating the entrance to the school.
Thank, thank you, sir. If you have no further comments, we'll open up questions of the hearing to the, to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Do you want? Okay. Do, do you want to say anything, sir? Okay. Do you want to say your name for the record? You want to just step, step up to the lectern?
Hi. My name is Ward Billingsley. I live at Village Condominiums, which is 1847 Middlesex Street. And I'm the president of the condominium association. And I've run this by most of the people who are involved, and we don't have an issue with it. We rather think that it's a good thing.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank, thank you so much, sir, for coming out this evening. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? All right. Seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. We're going to open up questions and comments to the board. The chair organizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Honestly, about time. Get a signage out there. I mean, it's been buried in the back, and there's just the one little sign that's been on a pole that try, people try to find it. And I think, and the sign itself looks fantastic. And also, it doesn't look like it's encroaching anywhere as far as cars coming out or going.
I know. We'll, we'll maintain all setbacks. And I know that there was a picture of the sign with the dimensions, which is approximately 60 inches wide with a height of 73 inches. And it will be constructed of the PVC and vinyl material. And it will be a white and green sign.
A little bit curious about the, the height of the sign as far as visibility from both sides of the street. Because you got that fence, you got that wooden fence that's there. Is it, I mean, the sample looks like you'd probably be able to see it coming up. I'm guessing that's coming from Middlesex Street.
Yep. There will be, the sign will be two-sided. There'll be the address and the name on both sides of the sign with the corresponding arrow. And we did have the, the top height of 73 inches, but the sign itself is 36 inches by 60. And that will be enough, so it will be visible above the fence.
Okay. So, even with the arrow on the bottom where people, and people are coming up from?
Yes.
That's, okay. No, perfect. Just because it makes sense, obviously, if someone's coming up from one side, you can see the arrow perfectly coming in, in, I'm wishing to try to add the directionals, but coming in from Chomsted on Middlesex Street to Lowell, obviously you can see it looking on the other side, but coming out of Lowell, going into Chomsted, if you got that wooden, that wooden fence on the side and the arrow not being visible. But I guess with, you still have to maintain the other side on the, the other side on the, on the pole.
Yep. It will be on both sides. And our intent is, there is a, kind of a street sign that is in disrepair there that will be removed and replaced with a sign.
And I like the design. And I'll be honest, I didn't know that the Collegiate Charter School's been around since 1886.
Uh, no, the, the, that 1886 is that we are managed by a company called Sabus.
Oh, okay.
They provide educational curriculum to schools throughout the world. So, they've, they were founded in 1886. The Collegiate Charter School of Lowell started in Lowell in 2013.
Yeah, okay.
And we moved to our permit site in 2016. The reason we put that Sabus there, that's kind of their tree. And us being a Sabus school, using their curriculum, we wanted to share the, the marketing with them.
Okay. No, that, all right. That makes sense. I was a little confused by that. I'm like, Chris Wood, the Charter School hasn't been around that long.
Not that long, no.
And then, but then, then it kind of dawned on me, well, maybe it's, you know, like you say, well, who owns it? Maybe they've been around that long, but that's.
And on the, on the school itself, we do use, you know, the Sabus tree. That's our curriculum partner. And they do have, you know, signage throughout the building that our students and parents see routinely.
Ah, great. No.
So, they would recognize the tree.
Well, I, I reemphasize my about time.
Okay.
We get some signage out there for the Collegiate Charter School, because they do great work. And people need to know how to get there, obviously. And one little, one little sign on a signpost, I'm sure, I'm sure it's going to help save a lot of people driving around trying to find the place. Well, now with ways and stuff.
Yeah. And especially being used, you know, as a polling place. We're really hoping that that will help the public as well.
Yeah.
Find the entrance.
Yep. Thank you. I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair organizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I am trying to understand what the dimension is from the street to the sign, just so that we locate this in a manner that does not create any hazards for seeing the traffic on Middlesex Street.
Yes. We, we're using, there's a company that we've used called Metro Sign. They are in Billerica. And they've done the sign design for us. And they are aware of the setbacks that are required to be from the sidewalks. I believe it's 24 inches or two feet. So, I think that's, you know, their intention is to stay within the regulations as far as the closeness to sidewalks.
Okay. Well, I, I still am not feeling comfortable that we have really studied the visibility for people coming and going from that site when they're trying to enter into the traffic on Middlesex Street. You're saying two feet from the sidewalk. So, the sidewalk's about five feet, so roughly seven feet? So, the sign would basically be seven feet from the curb on Middlesex Street?
Uh, yes. That part of the sidewalk at Middlesex Street does, it does bow out there for the entrance. That was designed, that was set forth from the planning board for the easement coming in. In addition, there is a crosswalk that is not pictured that is also located just to the right of the entranceway with the flashing signals as well. A lot of, you know, most of our parents are very familiar with the street address. And our main goal was to really help as a polling location, but also help deliveries to the school and things of that nature.
Okay. So, it's more like 12 feet than maybe. We're saying from the edge of the sign to where the curb is. Does that sound right?
Yep. We wanted to make sure that the sign doesn't impose on any pedestrian traffic, you know, for shoveling the sidewalk and things of that. So, we wanted to make sure we stay within variance. And the, the sign is certainly going to be better viewed coming from, heading into the city down Middlesex Street. But it will be two-sided so that, you know, it will, as you approach the school entrance, you know, we're hoping that that will also help the visibility. There is very little signage there now, so this is an improvement over what we currently have.
I agree.
Okay. Well, the, the apartment building next door, whatever the condominiums or apartments, have some kind of structure that's going to obstruct the view to the sign, don't they? It's like a mailbox or something? It basically is going to make it a little more challenging to see the sign?
The, there's, the proximity, I know in the picture, it's a little deceiving. There is a structure there that I believe it might be for post office or...
Sir, if you don't mind, just going to the lectern, just speaking, just for the public information. Thank you, sir.
Our, our postal boxes are right at the edge of the, right at the edge of our entrance. And where their sign is going to be going, I believe it's far enough in to where it doesn't, it's not obstructed from our mailbox. And the apartment building is set back so that the visibility coming in from the other direction will be good as well. I've, I've had a good look at it as well. And I don't think there'll be any obstruction at all.
Okay. I'm fine, I'm fine with the sign going in. I, I think that it makes a lot of sense to finally get something better than that small little piece of metal sign there that has been doing the job barely over the years. So, I'm glad that we're adding this. I just want to make sure that we're adding this in a manner that is going to be successful. So, at the risk of asking more of the Department of Public, of Planning and Development, I think I'd like to make a condition that the final sign location be reviewed and coordinated with DPD. Since we don't really have a dimensioned location on the plan, I'd like there to be a dimensioned plan submitted and that DPD weigh in on it for final coordination.
If I may?
Go ahead, Ms. Frances.
We do have a transportation engineer now, so she can review the signage and ensure that it's not a safety issue.
That'd be terrific. She hasn't reviewed this application, though. I take it. Is that correct?
No, she's not. But we can have her look it over as part of this condition.
Spectacular. Thank you. That's all I've been looking for. Okay. No further questions. I, I think this makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair organizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair organizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, floor is yours, sir.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I think this sign makes sense. When driving around looking at the property, I wasn't sure with my GPS. So, a sign would definitely help. I did, I did have to ask someone, was I at the right place? So.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Proko. I'm sorry. You heard my colleagues in the board. You know, to me, this is, it makes sense. It's pretty standard, this kind of updated sign. And, you know, it's, it's almost like a, a public way sign. You know, I, I see it more as like informational purposes and not like, you know, marketing and retail and all that, which I'm sure it is a little bit. But it's more or less for like, to help guide people to, to find this place, like, you know, like a street sign or something. So, I think it's, it's done tastefully. I think, and it's great that you have the association of the neighbors and the support. And, and we'll move to a vote, sir, along as you're okay with the one condition, just with the final sign location and review from like a DPD to make sure everything's, you know, fine and safe and appropriate and all that. Are you okay with that one condition, sir?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank, thank you, sir. With that, if I have no other comments from my colleagues, we'll move to a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2022-45 for variance at 1847 Middlesex Street for the Collegiate Charter School for a site sign to be located in suburban multifamily neighborhood, our district. With the one condition that the applicant submit a final dimensioned site plan for review for DPD and the traffic engineer.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Callahan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve with conditions.
All right, sir. Your sign's been approved. We wish you the best of luck then. Thank you for coming out this evening. Moving on to our next scheduled item on the agenda under new business, we have ZBA-2022-48. The petition is a special permit. The property is located at 346 Fletcher Street. Sin Chun has applied to the zoning board appeals to construct a duplex at 346 Fletcher Street. The property is located in the urban neighborhood mixed-use UMU zoning district and requires a special permit under section 12.1B to construct a duplex in this district and for any relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening. Attorney Catherine Flood, Flood Law Office, 549 Rogers Street, Lowell. I'm here on behalf of Sin Chun, who is the owner of 346 Fletcher Street. With me tonight is Teek Chee. The applicant is seeking a special permit to construct a duplex with required parking at 346 Fletcher Street. The property is located in a UMU zoning district and requires a special permit under Article 12 for use. It is also located in the acre district and will require historic approval. The building plans that were submitted with the original application have been modified slightly based on the inputs from the historic department. Under the zoning code, special permits shall be granted upon the determination that the adverse effects of the proposed use do not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the city or the neighborhood. As set forth in the application and as discussed tonight, I believe the adverse effects of the proposed use do not outweigh the benefits to the city or the neighborhood. The property is currently a vacant lot consisting of 4,649 square feet. It was previously a six-unit residential building that was destroyed by a fire. The lot has become a dumping ground where people dispose of trash, including mattresses. The proposed development of the duplex is in allowed use and meets all dimensional requirements for the neighborhood. The construction of the two units or the duplex on the residential lot provides a benefit to the neighborhood and the city by providing more residential units and cleaning up a vacant lot, which will be a benefit to the neighborhood. The project aligns with the intent of the Sustainable Lowell 2025 Plan by providing townhomes in close proximity to the train station. The proposed use is in compliance with the acre urban, urban revitalization and development plan by providing housing units in place of a vacant lot. The development will provide adequate parking for the units in the garage as well as two parking spaces in the rear of the unit. The proposed development does not provide any negative impacts on the environment. The townhomes will be connected to city water and sewer. There is adequate access to the building for fire and emergency vehicles. There is, there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicle access to the units. The entrance to the townhomes is on Fletcher Street, and the access to the garage will be off of Cross Street. Further, the developer plans on working with the Department of Conservation and Recreation under the Greening the Gateways Program to obtain trees, and the trees are shown on the site plan submitted. There are no negative impacts on public services and utilities anticipated for this project. The proposed development has a positive fiscal impact on the city. It provides for additional taxes, additional housing, and it's a benefit for the neighborhood by cleaning up the vacant lot. Also, by putting the building closer to the sidewalk, it provides a more pedestrian-friendly and walkable neighborhood as well as being close to the train station.
Thank you, Counselor. For the summary, if you have no further comments, we'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. We're going to open up questions and comments to the board. The chair organizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the comments from DPD are all pretty favorable for this project. And I certainly am thrilled that we're getting construction on this underutilized site with off-street parking and without overbuilding on the site. You meet all of the criteria for coverage and setbacks for the zone. And you provide a beautiful structure that has the parking hidden from view. It's tucked in behind. It does all the right things. And it's restrained. It doesn't overbuild in the lot. It's so, so nice to see these projects come before us. And you're providing street trees. So, it's like icing on the cake. I can't say enough positive things about this. I'm just happy to see that you've, you've hit the chord with the parking. You've shown restraint with the build on the lot, and you're providing street trees. So, underutilized lot, wonderful, wonderful project. I, I see that it meets the criteria for moving forward. So, I'm supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair organizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wish they were all this easy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wish they were all this easy. All the criteria's been met. Again, as, uh, as Dennis just indicated, you've used a tremendous amount of restraint and not overbuilding there. It's going to be a wonderful asset to the, to the neighborhood, and I enthusiastically support it. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Brier. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yes, I, as Member McCarthy said, the, the drawings, it looks fantastic. I think it's, it's a great rendition. I, I can't personally wait to see this through fruition because, fall right within the guidelines. The restraint is, is obvious. Initially, I thought, you know, that space, how is it going to accommodate? But looking at the renditions, the drawings, I, I, I think it, it would be a great addition. It would also, um, again, put space, like you said, it, it, it's a dumping ground. Um, even when I was there on Sunday, I could see there were a couple of homeless people in between, and I think if you have a structure there and a home there, you are going to, you know, you know, you won't have that, so, it, it, it would serve multiple purposes to have, um, that property, you know, with a, with a beautiful home. So I'll be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Proko. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Um, I agree with my fellow board members. It's, uh, showed a lot of restraint in putting the pro, putting the building together in the site plan. I do appreciate that, at least trying to save some green space and, on this, and providing a couple of trees as well, and, uh, putting the parking coming off of Cross Street, obviously, is, is key 'cause Fletcher is obviously a very well-traveled road, uh, especially during the school hours, so, um, I think, yeah, this project makes sense, and it'll work, especially in the UMU zoning district, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Um, Attorney Flood, I, I think, you know, I agree with my colleagues. Um, I, I think this is a, a great use of this kind of empty and, you know, kind of just blighted kind of lot. And, you know, for me as a more of a layman person, when, when I, when I see not many comments or neighbors in opposition or, you know, all these different departments and, um, weighing in, that, then, and to, to the comments of my colleague, I think, um, the, the owners and the petitioners, they, they show a lot of restraint. That's why very minimal relief is required. Um, so I, I think this would be a great addition, and, and the, the duplex you're planning on building, I think is going to fit perfectly in with that neighborhood. It's going to really complement it and not, you know, overdo the, the lot, like my colleague said. So I, I think this is a kind of, a, a great petition to come forward, that some of these petitions like this would be some more straightforward. Um, you know, that, that would be great if we can get more petition like this. So it's, again, like my colleague says, showing a lot of restraint, but really complimenting the neighborhood and just, you know, and, I, I really think this, this is a, a very, very thought-out, very put-together project, done very tastefully and complements that whole area, so I think. So kudos to you and to, to your client. Um, I think this is, um, a great use of this, this plot, this land here that's kind of just empty. If we have no other further comments from my colleagues? Oh, yeah, Mr. Proko.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I just have a quick question. I, I noticed that one, in the comments there, there was an additional impact that the stormwater engineers request, requested to meet with the engineers. They said that there were minor concerns in the stormwater system. Do we know what that was? Has it been resolved?
So, I received an email from, um, I think it was, it was the person regarding the stormwater, and he was going to reach out to Mark O'Hara and discuss it with him at the beginning of this week. I emailed him today to make sure that it was addressed, but I didn't get a response back. So if you want to put that as a condition, that we comply with any stipulations for stormwater management. We did submit the report. He wanted, I guess, some changes or to discuss it, but I don't know if they've actually met as of tonight.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Flood. Yeah, I think that should be a condition.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, thank, thank you, Mr. Proko. Um, Attorney Flood, if, if you're okay with that one condition, we'll, we'll go forward with the motion with that condition that we talked about, the, the stormwater management and making sure it's, um, up to standard. If there's no other further comments?
Nope.
Okay. Um, if you can have a motion, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA twenty twenty-two dash forty-eight for a special permit for three forty-six Fletcher Street, um, with the condition that the applicant, uh, resolve any concerns regarding stormwater.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. McCarthy, um, second by Mr. Brier. Can you have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve the conditions.
Vice Chairman Callahan.
Approve the condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the condition.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve with conditions.
All right, Counselor, you've been approving conditions. Um, we wish you and your, um, client the best of luck, so thank, thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you. Have a good evening. Um, moving on, uh, to our next agenda item, um, other business, we have the minutes for approval, for September twenty-six, twenty twenty-two minutes. Do we have any comments, edits, revisions from, from the board? If we don't have any comments, edits, or revisions? Seeing none, we'll, we'll go through with a, a motion to approve the minutes.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September twenty-six, twenty twenty-two.
Uh, motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Proko. Can you have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve the minutes for September twenty-six, twenty twenty-two.
Vice Chairman Callahan.
Approve minutes for September twenty-six, twenty twenty-two.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the meeting minutes for September twenty-six, twenty twenty-two.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve minutes for September twenty-six, twenty twenty-two.
All right, the minutes have been approved. Um, if my colleagues have no further comments, um, we'll just... Uh, Mr. McCarthy, go ahead, sir.
I'd just like to add, uh, 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 a thank you very much to our fellow board member, Robert Niroge, for his, uh, uh, diligent, um, work that he did on the board for a number of years here. He'll be, uh, he'll be missed, and we wish him, I wish him the best of luck with, uh, future endeavors. And thank you very, very much again, Mr. Niroge.
Well, also, thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
Uh, ditto.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Um, I, I close this, uh, with my colleagues. Mr. Nirobe, um, thank you for your service, um, on the board. It's, it was appreciated, so thank you, sir. Wish you the best of luck. Um, if we have no further comments from my colleagues, um, we'll have a, a motion to adjourn.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, motion adjourned by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Callahan. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. All right, the ayes have it. We are adjourned. Uh, thank you. Have a good night, everyone.